... by Ms. Richardson and the pledge followed by Mr. Carter.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. The kingdom come, the world be done on earth as it is now. Necessity, daily bread. And we give this our best prayers, as we do your brother and sister's best prayers. Please do not take temptation for deliveration. Open eyes to candor, our Lord and our Savior. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing we have on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda and the additional agenda as presented. Yes, sir.
When I was looking through the proposed agenda, I noticed that the comment time omitted my comments on the one that was sent out on the previous, this far previous meeting.
All right. We'll do that when we get to the next thing on the agenda and we can make those corrections.
Sorry, I jumped over there.
That's all right.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the adoption of the agenda and the additional agenda as presented. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Okay, now I need a motion for the minutes of the previous meeting. There you go, Mr. Ray.
There you go.
We got you though first time around, so we'll...
Yeah. If you could, just make that correction.
There should be a copy, I would say somewhere. It has Board of Supervising Meeting, May 13th, 2019, in the top left.
Right.
Should be a two-page space.
Mm-hmm.
But if you go down to the bottom, you see, uh, under Supervising Comment Time, the fourth down.
All right.
See comments by Supervisor Kurt Schreit. And we would ask consideration to consider the adoption of the amendments that those amendments made and then find his comments.
Okay. Does anybody else have any corrections they found in the last minutes?
I think the doctor does have corrections.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Any more extension?
Did you save it?
Yes. Financial status, Mr. Carter.
This is Board of, I'll slow down a little bit today because I know it's difficult telling, struggling to do these things, to get the appropriate sizes up so that they are readable, not only to the audience but our members at once. So, I will, uh, again, now. So, the first, uh, information that you have from a financial standpoint begins with the revenue summary. Please keep in mind that, as you well know, we are now in September. So, as we begin our review of the general fund revenue, which is back to your report, of course, the first column, second column, there has not been any changes in Fund One as an amendment, so those numbers are duplicated. You get to the column of third, it says current amount. That is the amount, which is $2,550,014.77. That's in Fund One. And the year-to-date in that Fund One is $2,661,381.27. You have a remaining balance of $23,121,122.73. Quickly, I'll jump back to the left. The adopted budget for Fund One was $25,782,504. So, you have about 89% of uncollected revenues in that fund. Typically, if you divide all these by 12, you're somewhere around the 83, 84 mark. So, we're on track for that. Uh, the next funds, uh, go all the way from Fund Two. They range all the way back to Fund Six, which ends with Fund Seven, 60. Again, we'll go slotting through there if you think back. Uh, the last meeting, we did have a budget amendment. So, the adopted budget on the far left of $89,532,432 was amended with, uh, some considerations for school at your last meeting. Brought that new total up to $89,722,289. Your current amount through all funds, $6,497,172. And your year-to-date is $11,339,137.34. That leaves you with a balance of $78,383,151.66 in revenues, or roughly about 87% left uncollected as well. So, those are running, uh, on trend. The next report, tell me, do something, I need to slow down a little bit.
While you're slowing down, while you're rolling this, I got a question.
Sure.
Uh, at the bottom, on page two, which is the front page, line 40,000, local funds transfer. Year-to-date, we're showing a negative 782,000. What is that?
Let me find where you're at. At the very bottom of Fund One?
Yeah.
Uh, 782,949?
Right.
That's an in and out. That's something the Treasurer's Office does. I can clarify you with that. As we all know, there are several accounts within there that get in and out by the Treasurer's Office. But if you'd like, I have an actual for that.
That really skews the year-to-date figure there in that column. Okay, that's what got my attention, so, okay.
It's definitely a different number, but, um, it's appropriate with the board or with...
One time later.
I can certainly find out and get that to you or to full board, how is he? On the expenditure side, again, page one, uh, for whatever reason, the bottom lines for page one's fund line shows up on page two. It's a spacing issue, we're not yet able to correct. But, again, using the Fund One totals of $25,888,786. Crossing the columns, the current amount of $2,213,7180. Your year-to-date, $3,981,587.15. And of the $25,888,786 that was adopted for Fund One, you have an unencumbered amount of $21,971,988.85, which leaves 84% of that one. So, your revenues and your expenditures are running very close through those totals. Again, on page two, it begins with, uh, Fund Three. It goes all the way back to page five, which is the summary pages for all the additional funds that are used within the ledger. Again, you have an adopted number of $89,532,432. You have an amended budget with those changes towards the school, where it has an amount of $89,722,289. You have a current amount of $5,594,710.15. A year-to-date of $9,846,422.92. And an unencumbered amount, $79,875,866.08, or 89% less in your expenditures. So, if you compare the revenues to the expenditures and understanding the question that, Mr. Atkins, you asked, and I'll certainly clarify that, that based off those numbers, you have a revenue, you have expenses of $79,875,866.08, revenues of $78,383,516.66. So, there's a million, four ninety-two, seven fourteen difference right there. Um, but I will get that clarification.
Fund Seven, 44, is that vehicle purchased? Is that why that's so large out today?
We purchased one vehicle. Uh, we get your appropriations and your carryovers, that's where the remaining vehicles will be. There's nothing appropriated out here. Your next sheet is a department listing, um, as we use it, basically a snapshot of the expenditures for each department in September of 19 versus September of 18. On the far right side has a column that identifies the difference, plus or minus. You go to the bottom of that, you'll see in September of 19, we had a total expenditure for those departments of $1,354,901.95. And we have a September of 18 listing of $1,591,554,89. So, in 19, we're $236,752.94 less than what the 18 listing was this time last year. Next sheet is, again, just the Treasury, and we start these out with each fiscal year. Range it all the way back to 12, 13. Goes all the way over to 18, 19. I will point out as the years have went by, our fund balances increased. So, when you see lesser numbers to the right, that's because fund balances increased and those are identified in those different numbers. For 18, 19, a year ago, we had a difference in deposits and expenditures of $2,023,627.27. Deposits a year ago was 10,234,945,31. Expenditures was 8,211,345,04. For 19, we had deposits of 10,525,967,19. Expenditures of 7,79,615,65, for a difference of $2,746,351,54. So, in those comparisons, for those years, were $722,751.27 ahead of those deposits and expenditures from a year ago to today. Your next sheet should be the sheets from the Treasurer's Office, they're titled County Expenses and Appropriations. We have a snapshot of August of 18 on the left and August of 19 on the right. So, very quickly, as I run down through here, the top two items on both are bank balance and CD investments. I'll go straight to the bold numbers. In 18, we had a number of $5,773,2750. In 19, we had $6,412,369,66. So, with that comparison, there's $642,42.16 more in those two for 19. Your deposits in August of 18, $4,342,729.08. August of 19, $5,610,752.13. So, we're up in deposits of $8,268,023.05. Keep in mind, these are timing things. So, you know, when you see that, it may be higher in order, maybe lower in the next, but they offset. The expenses in 18, $3,382,744.88. Expenses in 19, $3,473,062.48. So, 19's expenses were up, uh, 90,000,317,60. That brings you to your subtotals. In 18, the subtotal was $6,733,117. In 19, your subtotal was $8,550,593.1. So, you gained a million, 819,747.61. Your unspent, which is defined more in detail on the next page, but your unspent in 18 was a total of $300,212.94. In 19, your unspent is $555,573,487. So, your unspent appropriation is up in 19 by $255,521.93. If you take all those numbers and you subtract them out accordingly, you get to your balance. Your balance in August of 18 was $6,430,987.6. Your balance in August of 19, $7,994,324.44. So, again, you're a million, 564,225.68 ahead of August of last year. One other thing that I know, there's been some discussion about, what's called the Sheriff Radar Fund. In 18 was $958,614.58. In 19, it was $570,641.06. So, there's a decrease of $387,973,52 for that particular account. Yes, you will flip to the next page. It gets into the detail of the unspent that I mentioned previously. Again, 18 is on the left, 19 is on the right. We break these down by social services, school and capital outlay, and general count. So, in 18, the unspent for social services was $83,833.89. In 19, the unspent for social services was $74,535,69. So, there's a $9,298.20 reduction in that particular unspent appropriation. For county schools and capital outlay, in 18, the unspent was $169,238.14. In 19, the unspent was $341,590.30, for an increase in unspent for county schools and capital outlay of $172,352.16. And finally, on the general count, in 18, we had an unspent amount of $47,149.1. In 19, for general counties' unspent, we have a number of $139,608.88. But, as you keep in mind, we appropriated the purchase of all of the Sheriff's Department's vehicles. At your last meeting, we acquired one. So, there's $92,467.97 of that $139,608.88 that is geared toward Sheriff's Department's purchase cars. So, the bottoms, again, are the balances that we talked about. The next page is a very quick analysis of a couple things. Again, 18 on the left, 19 on the right. Treasurer's Office tracks that you watered sewer balances and have for many years. In 18, we had a beginning balance of $2,394,216.2. A year later, we have a balance of $2,241,949.14. So, we've reduced that balance by $152,262.48. The deposits a year ago, $238,742.56. This year was $169,578.3. So, we're down on water deposits by $69,171.73. The expenses were $121,279.30 in 18. They were $110,319.98 in 19. So, we're less in expenses also, $10,009,593.2. So, that brings you to your balance. Your balance in 18 for those cat horns, $2,276,748.36. And in 19, $2,182,698.29. So, overall, we're $94,050.7 cents less on that running tally. The loan write-off remains the same. The July 30th write-off remains the same. What changes is the total loss over through to present. Again, if you go across, you see $7,859.05,32 in 18. It's $7,765 and a quarter in 19. And it reverses back to that same $94,050.7 cents that's been reduced in that year's time. The last couple of things that I know, there's been, uh, interest in taxes as of late. So, very quickly, the rundown. On 18, the uncollected county taxes from 98 to 17 was $13,000,231,735.43. On the 19, of course, you change a year. So, you're going to 99,218. That number was 13,115,624.46. So, you're $116,001.1097 less in that comparison. Your PPTA changed slightly. From 18, it was 8,944,381.09. In 19, it's 8,989,301.86. So, there's a $44,927.7 difference in that one, which gets you down to your uncollected August. Of 18, at 4,287,354,34. And your uncollected in 19, at 4,126,322.60. So, PPTA is down 161,031.74. Last, I guess, comparisons I'll make on that page. Total uncollected county taxes in 2018, $17,756,095.3. Uncollected taxes 2019, $17,719,886.16. So, there was a reduction of $36,208.87. The PPTA, again, $1,025,659,69 in 18. 19, $1,039,315.33. So, that one is slightly higher, $5,027,184. In total, at the bottom, uncollected, 18, $15,934,353.4. And 19, $15,888,954,63, which is an overall deduction, $41,487. That's a lot of talk, but those numbers come straight out of the Treasurer's Office. The accountability, the force that follows that, is the Treasurer's reporting of the beginning balances, the debit and credits that go into those balances and then the ending balance on the fact of date. At completion of that, I will tell you, with your available balance identified earlier, there are enough funds to consider the full appropriations on your list for tonight. And I will follow up on that question regarding that number under the general fund, Mr. Atkins. And that's it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Something just entered my mind. Swift, I've made mention of this board a couple times, that Swift has a pretty sizable balance. And recently, they put a portion of that balance into a state investment pool. Washington County has, I think Fred Parker has some stuff in there. Swift has made a portion of their balance. Any of these not included, like these CDs, would any of those funds be an opportunity to put in? I think it's like, I don't remember the exact... My thing is earning like, right at 3%, which is... And it's completely, it's a, I don't know, and maybe these funds are protected to the point they can't, but it'd be a shame if we couldn't get a little bit more out of them.
My response to that would be, I would think that some of them have the opportunity. Some of them are not tied specifically. Uh, that would be a conversation we need to have in the Treasurer's Office to see the comfort level and the ability that he utilizes in order to make those happen. But I can certainly do that.
Yeah, I know when the fund came and presented this with, John, I was pretty comfortable with it. Fred Parker was there attesting success Washington County had out of it.
The Treasury underrepresented VML.
VML, cool. But, just a thought.
I'd be happy to go there soon.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
On the, back on the 744, the radar fund. Yeah, one car has been appropriated, we have four more, about one hundred thousand hours that will be coming out of that fund.
All the vehicles have been appropriated. The one that's been taken over.
So, that 570,000 current dollars, really would, does that include all of the five cars that were bought before that?
Two in the general, three in the 44.
Okay. Yeah, I'll just point out again that that account, if something doesn't change, is not going to be there in a few years. I would encourage everyone to keep a cautious look on that one.
Any more questions? Rob Farmer. Would you come state your name and record for the address, please, in citizens' time?
Rob Farmer, 2221 Highway 16 in Marion.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm here to discuss the library as normal. Last time I got to be here, we were about to start our summer reading program. That completed toward the end of July. They generally take a month off to recover. And now I can tell you what, you know, but it was very successful, once again, as always. Two thousand some odd people attending programs at all three locations of various types, animal shows, snakes, dragons, magic shows, crafting classes for adults, reading challenges in inflatable planetarium, and a lot else. So, you know, we're always very, very impressed by the creativity and the work presented by our staff for those programs that support literacy and learning over the summer. Upcoming programs now that we're back in session are Storytime, at all three locations, that started back, and there are several at each location. We have upcoming programs, including our local author reading and signing, game nights for grownups, Salt Falls Annual Boo Bash, family event, and Halloween trivia night. And there'll be, I'm sure, other things to be added to that. Next, importantly, at the 1st of July, we had two long-term employees retired. Now, Ms. Wyatt, after 30 years, Linder Ruth, after 25. And I'd like to come in and thank them for all their years of service. And if you can make it, we have made some changes at all of our locations in, now, with the setup and remodeling and different adding and shoving and stuff. So, we suggest you take some time to pick those out. Most of those have been made in Marion, including we have a new coffee station. So, please stop by, have a cup of coffee, check out the library. And a good time to do that would be Thursday night at the Board of Library Trustees Meeting, which would be 5:30 in Marion. So, thank you, as always, for your support of the library, and thanks.
Thank you very much. Aaron Hopkins?
Good afternoon.
Good.
How are you?
Good, thanks. Would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Aaron Hopkins, 755 Sugar Street. I have a couple of things here. Many of you know I've asked for several FOIA requests. And during my FOIA request, in which I did not receive full documentation of my request, according to the statute regulations, I found your answer is very, you know, concerning, especially the discrepancies. I sent out two FOIA requests, they were all separate. I received two separate responses. And two were by mail, the other one was in person. Within these documents, you can see that a discrepancy between the Exhibit A, right here, and Exhibit B, this one. However, this is not the only issue that I have. The other one, between Exhibit A and Exhibit B, do not match Exhibit C, which is your audit. The discrepancy between the 2019 FOIA request, which was printed, the audit shows there is a $260,747 difference. The 2017 documents is a $195,747... 900? No. $195,747,000 difference. So, no matter how you calculate this math, there's a $65,000 difference in your all's FOIA requests that you sent to me. The discrepancies between the all three documents, along these monetary concerns, are the facts that you all fixed just earlier, that you omitted... that you all fixed just earlier, that you omitted of the minutes. If you can omit something from the minutes, what else can you omit? So I have a question for you. What is the process and procedures that you all have for FOIA requests to be sent to me, so I can see it? And where is the actual FOIA request that I send that matches the audit? Since I have two separate FOIA requests right here that doesn't match the audit that you sent to me and I picked up?
This isn't a Q and A time, it's a, yeah, I know that if you're waiting for a response, I get that.
No, I mean, right here, there's a hundred, there's a two hundred and sixty thousand dollar difference in one that you sent me. There's a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars difference in this one that you sent me. All of them's a sixty-five thousand dollar difference, then the audit that I received doesn't match the two FOIA requests that you sent me. So your obligation here was to send me this information, and you did not fulfill it. Correct?
I'm, I'm, this is exactly what this is, it's a citizens' time, and when you get finished, and if you have questions, your questions are on record, and we will, staff will process this and get back to you as a response, but not during this timeframe, but we will, we will reply.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Where are we referring to?
The library.
Oh, I thought it was the county.
No, it's the FOIA request I sent to the library that sent me two different FOIA requests.
Mr. Chairman, may I just make a comment?
Sure.
I was misunderstanding, I thought you were referencing the actual county.
No, not the county, and I apologize for that. This is to the library. And the issue that I stated is the library sent me two different FOIA requests. I sent two separate FOIA requests, one to one department and one to the other. And when I did that, I received two separate FOIA requests, and they were fulfilled two different times.
Mr. Chairman, both from the library?
Both from the library, correct. I had to go to the library the other day and ask for the audit. And the response that I received was, there are no numbers available to give you this information. And I asked for the audit, and I received the audit, and then I proceeded to ask, how can you give me an audit if there's no numbers available? But I have two separate audit, I mean, two separate expenditures in my hand, but you have an audit to hand me? That's very concerning.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
There's a meeting tomorrow at five, or Thursday at five-thirty. Please come and address those issues to the library board.
Definitely.
That was a good idea.
I believe that it needs to be addressed here also. Everybody needs to know that I'm being fed one thing, that the audit does not match what is being given to me. You know, especially you, Mr. Dishon, and Curtis, all of y'all sat together here. You all are who comes together here, Mr. Atkins, Mr. Stevens, Mr. White, I mean, all of you all. You all are who represents this county. This is a major issue, that I'm seeing two hundred and sixty thousand dollars discrepancies. And it's just like it's no big deal.
I don't mean for it to come off as it's no big deal, we've got your information, and we will give you a response, but if they are.
Well, I understand you can't answer me, but.
Yeah, and if they are library concerns, I do think that's, that's where I would go to their board meeting, to get those answers, but we'll follow through with that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all that signed up to speak? Does anyone else wish to speak at citizens' time? I'll close citizens' time. We'll go to the payment of invoices. General County Accounts Payable Listing, one million, three hundred and fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and one dollars, ninety-five cents. Payroll, seven hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, ninety cents. Auto Draft Rule Development, eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars. AEP Century Link Bills, twenty-five thousand. County Administration Fund, five thousand. For a total, County Appropriations plus carryover of two million, ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Hold on, second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Social Services, which is in page three of the packet, September eleventh through September thirtieth of twenty-nineteen, of three hundred and fifty thousand. October one through October eight of twenty-nineteen, sixty thousand. For the total, Social Services of four hundred and ten thousand.
Move to approve.
Second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? School Operating Fund, which is on page four and five, Instruction, three million. Administration Attendance and Health, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Transportation, a hundred and eighty thousand. Facilities, four hundred thousand. School Food Services, two hundred and seventy thousand. Technology, a hundred and twenty thousand. For totals, School Operating Fund of four million, ninety-five thousand.
Hold on, second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Sheriff Fund seven forty-seven, which is on page six, of three thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Sheriff Fund seven forty-eight, one thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars, ninety-four cents.
Hold on, second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Recovery Court Fund seven forty-nine, one thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars and thirty-three cents.
Hold on, second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Mr. Alan Sumter, as the new Abingdon VDOT residency administrator, welcome.
Thank you. Pleasure to be here.
Thank you very much for coming.
I'll just open up and say it's good to hear, be here and meet you tonight, just tell a little bit about myself. As of today, I've been celebrating my thirty-first anniversary working in the transportation industry, twenty-five of it with VDOT. And I have held this role in, I guess, probably what's considered to be a record for VDOT, four different locations. It's been previously, I was the residence administrator in Lebanon residency for a few years, and Charlottesville. Prior to coming here, I was residence administrator in Wise Residency, responsible for Lee, Scott Wise, and Dixon County for the last nine years. I, in time, I had lived over in this area for about fifteen years in Abingdon area, I always liked it over here, so I decided to try to get back over into, into this area. And I'm a native of Lee County, and so I've been around southwest Virginia, done all of my life, except for the parts of whenever I've worked up and around Charlottesville area, and for a period of about four years. So I've been, I was actually appointed to this position on June the twenty-fifth, and first thing I had to do was take medical leave and go have a little surgery done on my neck. So I've just been, kind of actually been getting back into the flow of it now for about about a month's time. I don't know, you, you may have met, I've got with me this evening, John Beckel.
Mail your face.
So I know John. John is our Assistant Resident Engineer, down at the Abingdon office. And I'd just like to compliment him, he's been a great help to me. We've worked together some before I come over, and John is a great help, and very good to work with and everything. So I, I kind of wanted to kind of fill you in on just a few things here. I'm still learning a lot of the specifics of projects and activities and issues that's been going on and are going on here in Smith and Washington County, trying to get up to speed with those. And like I said, John's been a great help with, with those. But something that I wanted to kind of introduce you to tonight is, we, in other locations that I've been, we've produced a report that we provide to the, to the board, and if it would, I'm going to hand this out to you, and if it is something you think you'll be interested in, I think it is in your local plan, you said, your local plan for yourself. Should be, might be two copies about there.
Thank you.
The purpose of the, the report that I have there for you, is it's, I'll take this back a little bit. It's, it's meant to serve as a communication tool, to keep you updated on activities that are ongoing with VDOT in the area. There are items on there that have been passed along to us by some of you directly, some of them through with the county staff. It's got maintenance activities on it. It has information about bridge projects, traffic studies, project updates as far as what's on smart scale. It has some information on there about rural rustic projects that have been ongoing. And so what the plan is, is.
Hold on a second.
Go ahead, something.
I got to jump in here.
Sure.
We got the Mulberry Road on here, bridge, and that, that excites me, so.
Okay.
I hate to interrupt you, I like this, Ralph Rat.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sure it's something that any board would want, but I want to jump out of line for you.
Okay.
The bridge replacement says it's coming up for, as a candidate for State of Good Repair Funds. Selection's going to take place this fall. And you just, there's a lot of people out there suffering over that, there's a whole lot. Can we just go with that process? I'm sorry.
As far as the State of Good Repair Funds and.
Now, what's, what's the chances of that meeting at this fall?
I'm, I'm not sure exactly where, we won't know until all the scoring and everything's done. John, do you have an update on that, that, that? Might want to come up.
Again, just for John Beckel, Abingdon residency also. So last week, Mr. Atkins was down there at the district office, and we had, he'd asked about some information on that as well. So there, last year, they didn't fund any of the State of Good Repair projects, it was just because of some budget issues going around there. This year, what our bridge engineer was saying was that he felt that this has a pretty good chance this year. There's a lot of the interstate projects that have been ahead of it on the list that's been funded. The State of Good Repair Funds can only be used for projects or bridges that are scored at four or below, or you're basically structurally deficient or below, and so most of the ones that are in our area at least have been funded to this point. So he felt that it would be a good candidate for this fall, but again, we can't say for sure that it would be, that it will get funds. You know, if it did get funds, I think it said in there, well, I didn't write that on there, but the add date, if it does get funds, you know, it kind of comes in line with some of the other projects. So this same say good repair funding is funding some of the big bridge projects that are going on, you know, Mulberry Lane and over US Route eleven. So it would be probably out, I think he said twenty-twenty-four, the timeframe is when that bridge would be, is where that funding would probably come into place.
This is, works similarly to like the smart scale program, the plans are out there, there are evaluation processes that goes in, scoring, and then, we don't know when it receives the funding until.
Yeah, I get that. I'm just, hopefully some of this information I get back to some of them citizens out there that has kind of banged their head against the wall to get that bridge. I'm glad you went down and showed some interest in it. Just kind of like to see it get back to them. There's a lot of old people out there that have prayed a lot, so hopefully it'll get funded this fall, and at least have a date. I don't know, twenty-twenty-four is ways off, but it is a date.
If I might add, the other thing we ran into is the roundabout dispute that's been funded for that. We've got two different departments down there working on that, and now that each department knows what the other one's working on, so maybe we can coordinate those two together.
I'm glad you brought that up, so I ain't the only one getting off someone, but this is very important information for that area. The roundabouts down there, we basically talked about one for each side. And our last I heard, I've been away for some time, they was going to do the one on the left side going south, which would be over next to, we're skating rink and all that.
Left side.
So we're doing the one on the right going south, which is very, very more important than the one on the left.
If I may, I think the original word was somebody on the skating rink, but after reevaluation and analysis, it got converted over to the other.
All right, this is where I'm behind, because we're reasoning it was on the left side, and I am typically going to the right, because I think that will be the solving problem for that intersection right there. So I commend anybody that's worked on it, and you too, Charlie, for going down and checking on it. I apologize. No, you're good.
Well, the reports here to generate, you know, any kind of questions that you have, plus communication. So what, what our plan is going forward is that, and if you feel like this is a tool that you, that will benefit you, is that we, we don't plan to come and be here directly every month, but we will produce this report and get it monthly to Mr. Carter, that he can include it in your board packet agenda that comes with you for every month's meeting. And then we will kind of keep you updated through this, and then of course, anytime you have any other questions, we'll be glad to, you know, to address those. I have found that this is a good tool to kind of keep you updated, find questions that might come up, or things that you present to us, where they might stand, gives you a little sense of what our maintenance crews are working on, such as, you know, I know, you know, mowing is this time of year where we stand with mowing, how much mowing is done, where we're mowing at next, those types of things are listed on there. And like I said, you can see on there, we've got three rural rustic projects, and where they're defined for those, for them, which goes to be updated next month. Couple of other things that's on there, just kind of highlight, we are getting ready to do some, some patching on some of the curves on the back of the dragon that's been a concern, was expressed to me earlier when I came here, informed that there was some, excuse me, some questions about wanting to get that done. We've, we've issued a purchase order to our patching contractor, hoping to get that done with it permitting toward the end of the month. And as you can see, we, we have other information in here, which we're working with State of Lee's on the exit thirty-five bridge dedication. There's just some of the highlights that's on there. So do you feel like this would be something that would be benefit to you if we.
I'll speak for everybody, because I know everybody's head nodding, because this is our constituents that we, that ask us these questions, and it's, without, without having to come every month, if we have this, this is, I think this is invaluable for us to have, to be able to respond. So I, and I'd just like to say as well that I know sometimes when you guys would come, everybody's scrambling for their VDOT sheets of maintenance, so I, and I just encourage board members, and I assume this is as well with you, is that we put those together as board members with, with people's concerns, and we forward them with Kelly or Michael, and they get those to you. So I've always had very good success with those forms and, and response times, to be able, you know, even if it isn't in face to face, to get responses back and get things corrected.
What we will do is when you pass those along, like with your notes, and you get those to the staff, and send those to us, and we work on those, whether we have them complete, or we're working on them, or whatever, we will update those and have those on there that says. that says, issue's been addressed, or we're working on it, or in some cases, you know, we might not be able to do something. But we'll try to give, in addition to communicating with you, you know, one-on-one, but we will also try to put those issues that you bring forth in those notes that get past us, give you an update on those every month on here. And one thing that I will say on these reports is like this, you're going to see some repetition that's going to be on there every month. The list of projects that you see that's on there, like with the charts, with the project update, you may go several months or whatever before you see anything, or maybe even a year, in some cases, before you see any change. But what I would offer to you there with that is that you may have, you know, constituents that's out there, that if they look at this online, or whatever, if you post that on there, that month may be the only month that they look at, that they see that on there for the first time, or whatever, if that makes sense to you. So, if they're okay with you, then we'll pursue that, and we'll create John some work. I'll give John the compliment. I told John what I wanted to, what to create, and he's worked very, very hard for last week or two here, putting all this together to present to you tonight.
Thank you. I've got one more question.
I commend you. This is great. The only thing I was going, can we get this on our site? On our web? I think that'd be great.
That affects everybody here. That affects the road conditions, and that affects us all, so.
Well, that's, and again, it's totally up to you all to do however you, you know, you want to do it. But what I have traditionally done in the past is, like I said, get this in time to the county staff, that whenever you publish your agenda, and whatever information you put on your website in advance of your meetings, you can get that on there, hopefully, right on there, and have that out in advance, too. But that's totally up to you. We'll provide you the report. We'll talk and coordinate with Mr. Carter about the deadline, or what he'd like to have this, you know, with, and then, we'll start submitting it to you.
Very good.
Okay.
Any questions, anybody?
I just want to thank you guys, that White Tops Road and Grand State Hill Intersection. I appreciate you making that an item to look into, and the, to my standpoint, immediate response in looking into that, because I know I've had several constituents concerned about that. I was shocked, six, was it six accidents in the last three or four years? That's, I don't know what you all, what you all look at as far as high occurrence, but that's pretty high to me, so thank you. That means a lot, not only me, but I know it means a lot to the people who live in that area.
Do you have anything that we need to put on this to do with, to make that tonight, that you need to offer to us?
Mr. Chairman, I know that near Thomas Bridge, the Tilly's Bridge project, there's a lot of people excited about that.
I've got a maintenance concern that I'll fill out.
Okay.
And send the end, just some shoulder work on a real narrow road that's kind of a tire grabber, so, but that's, I'll have to address that tonight, I'll get that to you.
Okay, we'll be glad to look into it.
Okay. Yes.
I put you on the spot first right up.
I've got a backup spot.
Right off the bench and in the box. For our board members, there are a lot of changes at VDOT, and they revolve around a lot of different aspects. One of those is the LAP project, where now there are requirements for localities to have certified LAP managers on site by a certain date. Not sure if that's something you guys can speak to tonight?
I don't think that we'd be prepared to speak to tonight, but I'll be glad to look into it, whatever.
But what I will tell you is, we have two currently in the training module, and we're loving it, and we'll be sitting in October for the certifications to get those, but maybe in the future, if we can put something together, because those are, those are the type of things that, if the county continues to be involved in these locally administered projects, that you have to have these certifications, you have to have these people on staff, and they have to have that training. So, we can certainly talk about that, but they want to put you on the spot, but.
That's fine.
It's all good.
I want to commend you, both of you. You're super well worth it. Always had been a good time out there.
I'm kind of wondering why you're here and he's sitting there.
I appreciate you both. It's good for our community, being here and, you know, making it public and working. I think it's a, it's a big help, you know. Y'all have addressed, I know where I've been, where I've sat here, every time we give you something, it's been addressed. I haven't seen anything that hasn't been addressed.
Well, the one thing that I will say is that I have found, and one of the reasons that I did want to come over here is the staff that is here in Allen Residency, they are very high professional staff, they do a great job, and I'm honored to be part of them, and.
The only complaint I hear about you is your mowing. In which value, it's on your head on the shoulders.
Well, and it's probably Johnson grass, is it not?
Well, it's all kind of grass.
Yeah, but a lot of it is, a lot of the grass, and it's everywhere is the Johnson grass, it just seems so difficult anymore to try to keep ahead of it. It will grow, you know, probably.
I see you got three cycles of mowing here. Is that what you do, three mowing cycles regardless of how it grows?
It depends on growing conditions. We, two to three is typical.
Other than that, you do a good job.
Well, we try, so, you see, we're working on trying to get the third cycle going. It probably won't be long until frost will assist this and something.
Well, I hope you don't wet it on hat.
Well, it is, it is corn chop.
They'll have to slow it down.
It is corn chopping season, so there's a lot of new Johnson grass getting seeded every day, I'd say rolling off a dump truck, so.
We try to help you every chance, you know, we can, but there'll be times that we can't do everything exactly like, you know, was asked for and desired, but if it's possible, we will try to find some type of solution, best we can, and try to help you out.
Thanks for the report and for coming up. We do appreciate this, and I think it'll be beneficial to everybody, so thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, good night.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. I have information that I'll let y'all pass on now.
All right.
I do expect you to read it, there will be a text. On behalf of Mountain Community Action Program, its board of directors and its staff, I thank you for this invitation to speak to you. Those who do not know me, I am Mike Williams. I'm the executive director of Mountain Community Action Program. I've been executive director since June of 2017. So, in your packet, you will find a little bit of information on our background, community action, our funding sources, the impact of our programs, and there's going to be a last page that I want you to pay special attention to. The last page is called the Alice Project, Asset Limited Assistance Fund Employed. The Department of Social Services is now using that to target people that are in need. Our mission for Mountain CAP is to assist low-income individuals and families to become self-sufficient. Our goal is to get them off the rolls of DSS if possible, or to allow them to better themselves and their family's needs, so that they can be self-sufficient financially. So, as you look, we've been around since 1965, 1966. We were joined by Smith County in 1969, I believe the name was changed to Mountain Community Action Program. Sometime it was the Withland Development Corporation, and the Withland Pilaski-Smith Development Corporation, and then they decided they needed to rebrand. So, since that time, we've been Mountain CAP. In 1980, excuse me, 1968, we had to start having tripartite boards. That's why we ask that you appoint somebody, usually they're a board member or a board appointee. Out of our 15 board members, five are governing board appointees, you have two. With County has two, Blaine County has none. I'll be thanking for that. I recently spoke to your new board appointee, actually today, I spent a little bit of time with Heather Lewis, and very excited to have her on the board. The other one that you have is Linda Lorman, she's been on our board for quite some time, probably longer than most of us that have been around, so if I could say that. We get funded by several things. One of the things that we do get funded by is the Community Service Block Grant. That is our main grant that comes from the federal government, is we also get the temporary aid for needy families, just like DSS does. We get the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program, just like DSS, but we use it in a different way, along with some Department of Energy funds. We get the Emergency Home Accessibility and Repair Program from the federal government. We get the IRS Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Programs from the federal government, Project Discovery from the state government, and the EITC Earned Income Tax Credit Grant, that comes through our Association of Partnerships of CAPs on a state level. We are members of Virginia Community Action Partnership and the National Community Action Partnership, and through those, we get specific training and benefits, as well as we work together for, to obtain funding and improve our outcomes. We are measured, we report to the government, and we report to the Office of Volunteerism, Community Service, of the Department of Social Services. That is who we send information to, through online, if I can do a lot of things, the CSBG reporter. We have to meet organizational standards. We have to have a needs assessment, we're doing that right now, we do that every three years, Community Needs Assessment, specifically targeting the needs of your lower-income citizens. Okay? Then we do a strategic plan, that's every five years, to meet those needs, and then follow that up with a community action plan every year. We spend a lot of time filling out forms, and then planning, and reevaluating, and monitoring. So, we get a few grants from local places, like the Withland Community Foundation, the Pearl and Francis Charitable Trust, that goes to our Smith Emergency Assistance Program, as well as the Withland United Way. We partner with just about everybody that can partner. The list is, on the second page, it's quite, quite long, but includes DSS, District Three, BEC, Family Resource Center, the Community Service Boards, SRTAP, there's several things that we could speak to in our relationship with them, with all of those. We do various things, some we partner with directly, some we do a referral with, some we have MOUs with. Currently, we offer three programs. Our first one that I'll talk about is our Weatherization Program. Unfortunately, many people park the Winterization Program, but if we winterize your house, you would die within it, so, we weatherize your house. This is a very high-tech program. We, our crews are highly trained, they go to Christiansburg, the CHP's training facility, they're required to get this training and to get our funding. They can do air exchange training, they can look at your heat system, insulation, infrareds, things that they can use to look at how your home is using energy and is it safe. In the last fiscal year, we did 19 homes in Smith County, and I'm just going to talk today on Smith County numbers, not the entire numbers. Using the measures that are in the systems that we use, after those homes have been weatherized, they will see a $15,000 a year savings in total for those 19 homes, that averages $800 a year per home. Now, those numbers can be skewed, you have some that are very high, some that are very low. One in particular, our highest energy burden home, has projected a save $46,452 in a 10-year period. That's 360-some dollars a month, that's a house payment. The house was hemorrhaging energy. They were actually paying APCO just to sit around, because their house was going through this stuff. So, those are some of the things we do. Some of the things that they use are air sealing, proper insulation, replacement of light bulbs with LED bulbs, improvement, replacement of heat systems, among others. They also do some health and safety measures, like soft stands for air exchange, and vapor barriers to relieve moisture and humidity in homes, which is a major cause of asthma. Our second program I'll speak to is Project Discovery. Project Discovery is a state fund through the legislature, and it's a statewide community action program. We receive money to operate in this particular area by state statute, and so, we have Project Discovery in the three high schools in Marion and Royal Retreat High School. We are targeted to serve 63 students, 52 of those are Smith County students. Last year, we had 19 seniors graduate. All 19 are enrolled in college, or the military, or finishing up at your career technology center, their LPM program. So, it's, sometimes you lose them that year after, after high school. Along with helping those students, we also help them do the FASDA, apply for scholarships and grants. So, I told you, we had 19, three are going to LTN school, and one in the military, that's 15. We helped them garnish $224,950 in grants, and another $137,935 in scholarships. Those kids will leave school with very low student debt, for a total of $362,885 for those 19 Smith County students. Our last thing that I want to.
Can I stop you a second?
Yeah.
Getting on our own outreach program, I'm reading your thing here in red, it says 18% of the 22,795 households are below the federal poverty level.
Yes, sir.
And another 26 live below the basic cost of living.
Yes, sir.
So, is that 18 plus the 26?
Yeah, that means like 48% of your people are not making ends meet. And that's right off that Alice project, that is a, that Alice form, if you'll look at that, you can access that, you Google Alice, or United Way of Southwest Virginia, you'll find this information. They paid, the United Ways of Virginia got together and paid for this study, it's broken down by county, and you can look at some of the numbers, you can see how many of your neighbors by city, or town, or area are living at the poverty level or below making ends meet.
Survival budget for, and I don't want to, but this interests me, this is why I say here, two adults, 20, and one preschooler, a survival of 46,956. And, well, one person, 18,000, and I'm going to hand them something to everybody that's here. This is why I think it's very important that they care county money and no tax creases. People like this, you take a 46% of the population here, you have $10 to them, and that's devastating. I mean, you get where I'm coming from?
Oh, I, I know, I'm a taxpayer, I live at.
That's 40%, that's 46%, that's scary. It's really scary.
The numbers are staggering. Mr. Ray has been on our board, he can tell you, the numbers are staggering, in fact, they are scary. It's the basis of why you do not have economic development, because you don't have the people to spend the money. They don't have the money to spend. Middle-class Americans are where you get your money for economic development, and if only 50% of your citizens are middle-class Americans, there's where your economic development is garnished, it's on their shoulders. Biggest way to improve or decrease the number of middle-class Americans? Middle-class people that don't have many kids because they're expensive. Poor, rich people, they gotta go through something to get down to middle class, right? They're already spending money. Best way to do it, raise up the lower classes.
To that note, I got a question. I spoke, I ran into Ricardo Benardo, that let me. I spoke, I ran into Ricardo Benardo, the management show, and he's going to be hiring all through the year. They're getting equipment this week, or next week, sometimes, but, so yeah, there's 40 jobs there. You've got Smith County Machine Fabrication. You've got Spacide, which is hosting interviews in Washington County, September 17th and 18th. And you also got Spacide, which will be hiring another 130 people in Atkins in the very short future. My question is, are you in tune with those happenings to the point that you can send some of your clients in the direction of where those jobs are? Because there's about 200 jobs right there.
Yeah. And how'd you get there for that job?
Well, there's been some-
You got a job? You got a job?
I agree. And there's been some programs that have been placed throughout the state in recent legislation that helps with that.
Oh, I hope it does. I am in tune with it.
You didn't answer my question, though.
And whether we're in tune with it, yeah. We, and if I, when I speak to the outcomes or to the outreach, you'll hear that that's what we're doing. So, and I think, I figure you have Ms. Marty Holliday coming on with the Workforce Development Board, and so that, she can speak to those as well. Our job, we don't have the funding for job search right now. We did ask this board for $5,000 for capacity building for this year. We didn't get it. We didn't get any from With County, just don't feel bad. But we try to build on the capacity and we are grant-funded. We have to get 20% of our funds from any time. That's in states, time of our board of directors, and any monetary donations we get from the community. What we have done, though, with knowing that those thresholds are, and of our folks, I think roughly 30-some percent that sought aid from us were employed, but a rather large were not employed at all and not in the job force, which is, we need, you know, it takes everybody on this, but they weren't even in the job force. They weren't even looking for a job.
They weren't looking.
They're not even looking. They're not in the job force, they're not registered. And one of the things, when they come in, as we do things now, you gotta get over here and you gotta register with BEC, so you're looking for a job.
So are they looking for a free handout since they're not looking at it? I mean, you asked me. I'm trying to learn your side of the story.
Some are, yeah, some are. And we're changing from that. We used to do a lot more emergency services with our TANF money. We do have a Smith Emergency Fund, which that money is given for that, that charitable trust and the box, that is specifically for those that have emergency. But we're moving towards if they have to do a, let me get the, a sustainability or self-sufficiency assessment. They don't like doing it because it tells us where they are in whether, financially. Are they in chaos, can they maintain a home? And then we develop a plan within the financial empowerment, looking for a job. We can help them with education barriers for employment, for TANF recipients, people with a child in the home. We can help them with those. We can pay for them to go to Lyman's School, or we can pay for their hotel while they're at Lyman's School, plus that first six weeks is in Galax. Or we can pay for their gas to get there. They can get there to go to work. So our funds are very, what we use them for, it's very specific. Our CSBG funds cover payroll and administration of it. That's what that's specifically for. Our TANF funds, little bits for payroll, the rest goes to direct services. We are pushing the employment and educational barriers because if you want to get there, that's what we're helping them get. So we are doing those types of things. You gotta meet them where they are and then lead them through. We are in that change. We also will be monitoring that. If they decide to do this, we can come in and they can get emergency assistance for one time, and that's it for the year. We're getting ready to change that to be a little bit longer than that because they'll come back every October after their electric bill. We're trying to weed them off of that. But if they have no electricity and children are cold, we have to meet those needs as well. I do have a family we're working with, with DSS that's in the Salt Lake area, that is an older couple that have custody of a young boy. And mom or grandma has a, she had a stroke. Their electric bill was $1,200, been cut off. Yeah, we're paying that. We're paying that. We're getting that electricity, but we're also working with them to get in a better house because that home can't be weatherized. So we gotta meet them where they are, but we're going to work and moving up. DSS, I'm not putting it down, but DSS is to meet your basic needs. On the Maslow Scale, they're right there at the bottom, the basic needs. Are you getting fed? Are you warm? Are you safe? We're going up the scale. Okay? Can you get some self-actualization by getting a job or by getting education for a job? Now, we don't send people to college with this money. We could help with a CNA or we've cosmetologists. And we're doing that in With County, so, you know, we've got some, you know, for people that graduate and they're IN, but now they need help to get on their feet, we're helping people like that. So we gotta meet them where they are and move them on up. Another thing we do is free income tax assistance. Our free income tax for Smith County, we did 108 folks or 108 households. IRS says that you can save $250 per one if you have, if we do it for them, they don't pay a thing. We had, so we saved households $27,000 on that. We had total federal refunds of $122,793 of 108 that we did, and state refunds of another 27 or 21.5, and EITC of 37.9. So that's $295,000 of buying power that we've helped folks to do that. So we meet certain needs. And as we have our Community Needs Assessment when it comes into fruition, we should be able to report that to you, and when it's done, we will report that to you, probably be January. From there, we take, do a strategic plan, and from there, we can say, okay, here's your needs, here's what we found out. And we survey them. We've collected surveys from areas. We go out there, we beat on the doors, fill this out, please. What's your need? What's your need? Not just to help, we can take the information from the health surveys and others, but we do this on what's your basic need. Another thing we're doing is we've entered into an agreement with Family Preservation Services. This came through a little backroom talking, so to speak. Family Pres, you know, we're Family Pres. Your daughter works for Family Pres. They help children in schools that have behavioral problems. And so we will have a crisis stabilization room in one of our empty classrooms downstairs. We've had clean, spruce up, added couches, rocking chairs, things like that. So those kids, if they're in trauma, they're suffering, they can't make it through school, they got a safe place to go. On October, and really, this is not out, but I have spoken to their representative yesterday, we will have an intensive day treatment during there at Mount Cap for people failing substances. Four days a week, three hours a day, 10 weeks. So, you know, we've talked before on the, on the problems we have with drug abuse. So we're meeting those needs by doing space. They give us money for utilities because the county provides the building. That's the Smith County School Board building. So, last thing I want to speak to you about, and I already spoke to you at your last meeting, is Census Complete Count Committee. I've already begun studying on it. I hope you have. But I've already begun doing it because CAPS need to. My funding comes based on the numbers you have. Your funding is based on the number of people we have. The hardest people to count this last census, sure to grow. Hardest people to count, they don't turn theirs in. They don't have internet. And this one's going to be on the internet. So we will open up our computer lab to do those things. We want to be making sure that everybody, and it's not forcing people to, hey, it bothers to, in the census. That'll come around in April next year.
Yes, sir.
Funny you bring that up.
Well, this is in the paper, and it's on your way.
And it's also on our agenda.
Oh, is it? Right.
We're actually, our appointment committee will be talking about this later in the evening.
Well, we would like to be involved.
Well, and here's your formal invite to become part of the county's CCC.
We will, we definitely do that. Both our national organization, we began this about a month ago, getting into it, because, like I said, our funding is based on that. Not on, but it's not just our funding, it's your funding, it's our committees. I've served Smith, With, and Blaine County. I want to count every blooming one of them because we're important. We do spend time in January, I actually spoke with Ned over here down, we visit the legislature. We do those things because we need funding. Last, two years ago, we got an extra $2 million in TANF funds for CAPS. This year, we're going for another three. Because with that funding, I mean, I got $300,000, or excuse me, $30,000 more than you.
Well, if it's no bother to you, we're going to include you on that.
That's fine. If you have my email and everything else. But we do thank you, and I'll get your name on one of these days, I know that.
Quite used to it.
I used to call all my students Skippy because I couldn't remember their names. I do ask, though, that you looked at this Alice report, and this is a good number. This came out in 2017, makes some 2015 numbers, good number. And this tells you a lot about who you are. Those that have worked in schools may have studied under the teachings of Ruby Payne. He teaches on generational poverty. You've done that as well. So you know who I'm talking about. That's what we have to look into. So I do appreciate your time. Good?
Mike, thanks. I appreciate it. I know it was pretty enlightening for all of us, so I appreciate your time.
We are 602 South Iron Street, but five days a week, and we're there.
I'm excited, you know, the FPS thing, a little out of the box, and, you know, there's, that's what, this gentleman from Giles County, that's what it was all about, it's outside the box stuff. And that's why I brought up the jobs thing. Not that, not that you're workforce development, but hey, you got people that are underemployed or unemployed, and we've got jobs coming. So you gotta get outside the box, and I appreciate what you guys do.
Lisa emails me all the time with the jobs, and we post them out there and we tell them how to, we'll help them get on, because we have a poor computer, computer lab, which periodically gets used. Also have a meeting room, not as big and nice as this, but almost the same size that we do, audiovisual, so. But we are to be part of the community. We have an office in With County at Hope Ministries, so we do outreach there as well for With and Blaine. And we have some specific grants that go along with With and Blaine County. But thank you again. Thank you for your consideration. I'll be back again to ask for that $5,000.
Thanks very much.
Just warning you. Thank you, and thank you for your invitation to be on the Smith County.
Absolutely. If you guys could be patient for just a second, we, I've been asking if we could take just a short recess. If you give us just a minute, we'll be right back. Thank you very much. You done one bug? New River Mount Rogers Workforce Update.
Yeah, so I am Marty Holliday. I'm the executive director of the New River Mount Rogers Workforce Development Board. And greetings from the New River Mount Rogers Workforce Development Area Consortium Board, and there'll be a test later if you can actually say all of that when I'm finished.
Three thumbs fast.
I know. And so the consortium board, how our program came about, first off, there's always been employment training programs since Roosevelt. It just depends on how the federal government wants them to look. And about 1998, they came out with the Workforce Investment Act, and what had to happen was the localities within each state came together and depended on who was going to be in the area. So the eight localities of Mount Rogers and the five localities of the New River region, they formed an area because they'd kind of been functioning together at the previous program. So we started with that, and we have CLIOs, Chief Local Elected Officials, that meet. And those CLIOs kind of oversee the big picture of the money, as well as making appointments to the Workforce Development Board, and at that time, it was the Workforce Investment Board. And each locality has business reps. Our workforce board is 51% business, and the rest is about 20% made up of all kinds of other organizations. We have labor. We have post-secondary education. We have a representative from Career and Technical Education in the K-12 system. We have a business that's not just represented as a business, but they are a business that runs an apprenticeship program. We have Economic Development sits on the board. The Virginia Employment Commission has someone on the board. Department for Aging and Rehabilitative Services has someone on the board. We have a CAP agency on the board. So we have all these groups. And the purpose is, is the workforce boards are supposed to be facilitating and coordinating all of the various workforce programs that come into a region. So it kind of looks like cat herding many times because those funding dollars come from somebody else, at the federal level and at the state level. Well, in 2010, this group of CLIOs came together and through a joint exercise of power, they came, became a single government entity. So there were ordinances done at each locality, and we did it again in about 2017 when the new law came into effect, which is the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act, which is what we are operating under now. So that one is due to be reauthorized next year. Who knows? I'm thinking that that's an election year, so the likelihood of that happening is slim to none, but they make surprising. So basically, what we do is we are almost totally federally funded. So the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Funds is actually passed through the state of Virginia. So each state gets a certain amount of money based on formula, and it's the formula is based on the amount of unemployment in the state, the amount of excess unemployment in the state, and the amount of individuals living in poverty in the state. And just for the record, Virginia is one of the lowest-funding states in the country. We usually rank it about number 48, sometimes 49, and on occasion, we've actually been the lowest-funded state in the nation. Then what happens is all these localities get looked at again, that same formula, percent of unemployment, excess unemployment, percent of poverty, and there's a little bit of historical stuff going on. And quite truthfully, the rural localities take a little bit of a hit because of how they do this bumping of census blocks. And as you can imagine, our census blocks aren't what they are in Northern Virginia or in the Hampton Roads. So consequently, this year, we took a 21% funding cut with our REO of formula funds. Still going to do our thing because that's what we do. So we have formula funds to serve dislocated workers, and right now, we are serving the individuals from TRW. We've done a job there with them. They are trade-eligible, which is handled through the Virginia Employment Commission. Virginia Employment Commission also does the unemployment component, but the actual serving them as dislocated workers and assisting them so trade will pay for their training because they're trade-eligible, but all those supportive services, the actual assessing of each individual, what's their interest and their aptitude, do they actually have basic skills right now to be able to go on, to get further training, to get a new job? And if they don't, how are we going to handle that particular individual? So that's done in our dislocated worker program. We also handle dislocated workers that could be just laid off one at a time, but for the most part, our large number of dislocated workers are handled through plant closures or layoffs. And they could also be, interestingly enough, a dislocated homemaker. Somebody who is at home, maybe her husband lost the job, maybe her husband has passed away, she has to go back into the workforce. We consider her to be an actual dislocated worker, and she gets served with those funds. Best part about those funds is there's no income eligibility. You could have made $250,000 yesterday, lost your job due to no fault of your own, and we are able to serve individuals in that situation. Also, formula fund is the adult program, and that one is a little bit income-eligible. So that's our first sign of criteria. We work very closely with CAP agencies, with the DSS offices, Department for Aging and Rehabilitative Services to identify individuals that need our services. We are not an entitlement program, so just because you're eligible doesn't actually make you suitable for the program because our end goal is for somebody to get a job making a livable wage. You just saw those Alice numbers. So we don't send people, they have to beg me and tell me this is the only opportunity for this individual- for this individual to send them into CNA training. I won't do cosmetology. Very few people can actually make a living in those kinds of occupations. We are very focused on in-demand in the region, we work very closely with Lenny Gale in trying to serve our manufacturers, because they tend to pay a little bit more. We try to get people to upscale, maybe we're working with somebody who has a CNA already, can we get them to an LPN where they could make more money, or some kind of technical training where they could make more money, and have better opportunities than just a CNA. We also have a youth program in that formula funding, those three funding streams coming from the federal government, through the state of Virginia, and our youth is from 14 to 24. The new law, we used to do a lot within school, we were a lot in the high schools, working directly with students that were kind of struggling, trying to help them get their SOLs, and making that transition from secondary education into post-secondary, into the military or into work, but handholding them to make that transition in whatever was the best course for that youth. We were at one time, 75% of our funding and time was spent in school, working with those students. The new law said, nope, we want you to spend 75% of your time working with out-of-school youth, and that was youth that aren't attached to any kind of training, so they can't even be in the community college when we get them, to help get these young people that have fallen through the cracks. Interesting thing is, if they don't want to be found, you will never find them. So that has been a real struggle. Virginia just went and asked the federal government for a waiver to at least be allowing us to spend 50/50 money, to continue to serve those high school students, why should we wait until they fall through the cracks to have to dig them up later? Let us help those kids that need our help right now. We will continue to work with the kids and the young people, that, the young adults that we can find when they're ready to be found. So, one, those are big programs that we do. We are also an awardee of a very large federal grant, direct with the Department of Labor, not through the state of Virginia. We went after a America's Promise Grant, which is an H1B visa grant funds, and we were one of 23 fundees in the, excuse me, in the nation, and we got a $6 million grant to serve 35 localities in southwest and southern Virginia for four years. We are nearing the end of our third year, and we will finish up this grant in December 31st, 2020. And as of now, we are, that federal grant required that we serve 1,100 individuals, we've already served 940, and hitting all of our federal numbers, all the requirements. Average wage across 35 localities is at $22 an hour, because that was totally focused on middle skilled jobs. So we could work with individuals, again, taking that CNA, bringing them to an LPN, but we are working with three industries, healthcare, information technology, and advanced manufacturing. And that one was all about skills. It's also a three-pronged grant, so that particular grant is not only training individuals, as we told the federal government we would do, but we are also working on a portion with the Council for Adult and Experiential Learning and nine community colleges on credit for prior learning or prior learning assessments. So all the colleges will tell you they do it, but if you could figure out how it gets done, then you're the prize winner for tonight. What we wanted then was to begin to actually run processes of how an individual could come to them, to go through a credit for prior learning assessment. Our intent is to serve those working adults who are trying to better themselves, and they shouldn't have to start at square one, because chances are, some of them could teach some of those college classes in order to move on in their degree. So we're working with the Virginia Community College Systems Office in Richmond, is supporting us in this particular project, and we think that once we get these policies and procedures written in these nine community colleges, that they actually begin to do outreach to working adults, instead of just high school students, that we're going to see a better turnaround of individuals who might be able to be served by this. So they're not going to get their whole college degree, but they might get a semester, they might get a semester and a half. And if you're a working adult, and I was, when I finished my degree at 32, I had two young children at home, and I got part of my degree as credit for prior learning. So this particular piece is really important to me, because I know how it really can make a difference for an adult trying to move themselves along. The other piece that we found was, information is sketchy at best, it depends on who you ask, and the day of the week, and what they had for lunch. So how do people find out about the jobs that are available? How do they find out about what those real skill sets that are necessary for those jobs? And okay, there's the skill set, where do I go to get that training? Is it at a Burtson mortar? Can I do it online? So we're working on a portal that will just allow people to sort through that. Again, we're very focused on those working adults, we believe, so for this moment, that much of our needed workforce are currently working in low-paying jobs. The problem is, is we can't train them, because they can't give up those low-paying jobs, because that's what's putting food on their table, that's what's paying their rent. So how do we reach and serve those adults who are perfectly happy to get up and go to work every day? They have the work ethic, and many of them are working two jobs already. So what can we do to serve them differently than we're doing? And these are some of the things that we're trying now. We're going after other grants that will give us opportunities to try some hybrid training programs. Does it work? I don't know. I personally couldn't go through an online program and expect to actually complete, I'm a terrible procrastinator, and I'd be the night before the class was due, and I'd be trying to scramble through every single lesson. I actually need that connectivity to somebody, helping, keeping me on target and on task, so, we don't know, but we're looking at all kinds of ways that we might be able to serve these individuals. So I didn't want to keep you really long. You do sadly, right now, have a vacancy again on the Workforce Development Board, because each locality is allowed to have two business reps to represent their locality, so we're open to any business rep that you all can come up with. We like it to be a business rep that's important to the locality that is sitting them. So what's important to Smith? That's the businesses that we would like to have sitting on the board, so that they can speak to the issues that are important to Smith County. I will tell you that I'm glad that not all 13 localities have two on the board, because that would be a monstrous board. And we're plenty big now, we usually come in at about 25. So our, every other week, there's paper in there, if you're ever interested to come see our board. I believe that Ms. Plant is the representative for the CLEO Board, which is where the Chief Local Elected Officials or their appointees attend, and again, that is more of an oversight policy, first stop for the budget, because effectively, the localities are responsible for the money that we show. I tried to make that really fast.
You seem very passionate about it, too. I love to listen to someone give a presentation that's...
I do love what I do most days. If I could make the state go away, and by the way, I do tell them, if you would just stay in Richmond and let us do our job, we would be much happier here. But, you know, when you're dealing with federal funds, you know, there's more accountability than you can shake a stick at. But any questions on what we do and how we're trying to work?
Anybody have anything?
No, but I'd like to, I mean, it seems like they're trying to have people who've tried to help their sales, and those are their success stories.
We are, and we're trying to be better about showing those success stories. And you know, sometimes, you know, I, our frontline staff, like, you know, if, if the individuals we serve are the target, I'm the outside ring, you know, I do everything at the 5,000-foot level, so we have, we actually, the law says that the workforce boards cannot actually do programs, so we subcontract out. People Incorporated does it for adult and youth for the Mount Rogers region, Goodwood Industries of the Valley is adult and youth in the New River Valley, People Incorporated does dislocated worker throughout all 13 localities. And frontline staff is usually very good at being able to identify if this person is ready for the program today. So sometimes when we do tell people no, it's not because it's no for forever, but today, they're not really wet, ready to do the kind of stuff we're going to ask them to do in order to get them ready to go back to work, especially if we put them back to school. We are very conscious of taxpayer dollars, and we don't want to, you know, sometimes life happens, and nobody saw it coming, and somebody doesn't make it all the way through. So we work really hard with that. But occasionally, a case manager will fight for somebody that has all the makings of a failure, and it's always exciting when they were right, and somebody, and we had one, the young lady that two programs, both the Pathways and our adult program supported, she had gone in and out of our program before, and she had a lot of drug issues, her live-in boyfriend had a lot of drug issues, and she had a child, and she finally came and she says, no, I'm ready, I've been attending, and I'm clean, and, you know, my frontline staff in the Pathways great, went, ooh, boy, I don't want to spend our money on that. But okay, we helped pay for rent, because sometimes that's what it is, you know, what is, what kind of supportive services do they need? Sometimes it's, we fix a car. We paid rent, got her out of a bad situation, and moved her into a better situation, and dang, if she did not complete her LPN program, got her boyfriend clean, and he went through our program and got into training. So sometimes, those of us that are in the backrooms, and it's, like I said, if, I was very close to just say, no, 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 this is a risk we should not be taking, but it was a risk, but it paid off.
Absolutely.
We do like it when we have those stories.
Absolutely.
So thank you for your time tonight, and y'all have a great evening.
Thank you so much, thank you so much. Ms. Lenny Gale, Mitchum?
Good evening, everybody.
We're getting a lot of good updates tonight.
Right.
Sorry to keep you waiting, but appreciate your patience with us.
I'll be quick, oh, thank you. I'll be quick, it's seven o'clock, and I know you all are probably getting ready to go home. My name is Lenny Gale Mitchum, and I'm the Executive Director for the Southwest Virginia Alliance for Manufacturing. We go by SPAM, or some people say S-SAM, whatever you want to call us, we are, that's our name. And the gentleman, Mr. Sumser, got up here and told you that he's celebrating his 31st anniversary with VDOT. I'm celebrating my sixth anniversary today with SAM. And in the time that I've been with the organization, we've seen a lot of growth and a lot of changes, and I'm excited to be here tonight to tell you about some of the things we have going on. So just to remind you all of who we are, we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. We were established in 2007 as a joint idea between the Smith Washington Industrial Facilities Authority and local manufacturers that said, we need an organization that's focused on keeping manufacturing here in our counties and growing it. Our mission is supporting the sustainment and advancement of manufacturing in southwest Virginia through regional collaborations, improving the image of manufacturing, and closing the skills gap. And basically, that was a brief summary of these three goals that guide everything that we do, the regional collaborations, improving the image of manufacturing, and closing the skills gap. And so I wanted to focus as much as possible on Smith County and what our Smith County representation looks like. Obviously, we serve southwest Virginia, and we're doing a lot of things for the region, whether inside or outside of Smith County, that will indirectly benefit Smith County. But to focus on some of the things in your county, these are our members that are just in Smith County, we have 30 members total, and these members represent about a little over 2,000 employees, and that's almost a third of our total membership representation is here in Smith County, so that's significant. So some of the things that we accomplished, last time I talked to you all was July of 2018, so to recap some of the things that we accomplished last fiscal year, because we work on a July to June fiscal year. Last fiscal year, we had our Manufacturers Expo that we have every year, and that provides a really unique opportunity for the region, where manufacturers get to come together and get to know one another, talk business, talk challenges. There is also several resource providers in the room, like the Workforce Development Board, they're there to help them with their needs. We've had a lot of success stories from that. One manufacturer was talking about how, because of the expo and the connection that they made, they were able to add $5 million in profit to their business. So it makes a significant impact to just bring manufacturers together, and they can talk about how they can support one another, and maybe even do business together. Another one of our biggest events of the year is our awards banquet. We do have that coming up on October 3rd, we do it every year in conjunction with National Manufacturing Day. Last year, we gave away six awards, two of those went to Smith County companies, the Shoaly IPM Packaging was the Manufacturer of the Year, and Utility Trailer and Atkins received a Community Choice Award. But we focus these awards on areas where we know that people maybe think negatively about manufacturing, they have a negative perception, that's often incorrect. So we were meeting with Smith, we were actually in, at Chilhaway Middle School and Northwood Middle School last Thursday and Friday, meeting with sixth, seventh, and eighth graders to show them what manufacturing looks like. And we asked them, like, what do you think of when you think of manufacturing? And they said, dark, dirty, dangerous, pollution, and so what we did is, our activity is, we took them on a virtual reality tour of a manufacturing company. They put on a VR headset, and they looked in, and they got to see Toyota facility that was making work lists. And out of the 500 and something kids that we spoke to, we got at least one positive, we had at least one win, because a sweet kid was looking at it, looked around, took it off, he was kind of shy, sat down, and he said, you know, it's a lot cleaner than you would think. And I just wanted to grab him and hug him and say, you got it, yes, it reached you, thank you, you paid attention. So those are just some of the things that we try to do, is improve that negative perception. So these awards are, we show them that, we want to show it to everybody that manufacturers get back to the community, they care about their environment, that they're doing cool things through innovation, that they have a focus on safety and things like that. Some of the things that we're doing around the areas of improving the image of manufacturing, we put out 22 videos last year, one of those was a series on generations of manufacturing, and it's been very, very popular. In fact, a lot of the schools in our area have told me, oh, I show that to my students, I show that to my students. And what we did is, we interviewed millennials, and three different generations, but the one that's been the most popular is the millennial generation, and we had them talk about their job, but we also had them talk about how their job allows them to have a fun home life, allows them to go on vacations, allows them to soup up their truck, allows them to do the fun things, that they enjoy their job while they're there, that they can also have a good home life, which is what's important to millennials. So those videos have made a big impact. We also had several manufacturing tours, where we have been able to take people into facilities and show them the cool things that are going on in our area. And you'll see up here in the corner, and on my shirt today, I'm in my Career Fair garb, which is why I don't look a little bit more professional. We were planning to do a Career Fair today and talk to students and do our VR, but you'll see that hashtag #MadeInSouthwestVirginia, that's how we kind of brand all of our efforts to change the image of manufacturing, to show people what is made right here in their backyard. We did manufacturer career, which provides college students an opportunity to learn about manufacturing, and we have panelists who are all manufacturing professionals, go into the four-year colleges and community colleges in our region, and talk to students about their career paths and what's available in manufacturing. We did that at five colleges this year. We spoke to almost 1,200 students going into the Career and Tech Centers to present on opportunities in manufacturing, again, addressing some of the myths that are associated with manufacturing, and showing them how, showing them the reality, myths versus the reality. We reached about 1,300 students through United Way of Southwest Virginia's Careers Expo for Youth. Again, we did that VR tour, and were able to expose students to what manufacturing looks like today. We have a program called Outstanding Woman in Manufacturing, where we awarded different women in manufacturing to show the community, yes, there are women working in manufacturing, and they are doing great things. So the goal for that is to increase the number of women going into careers in manufacturing, but also work on retention of women in manufacturing. We also, for the first time, did a Women in Manufacturing Symposium, where we had a panel of women professionals talking to other women professionals. And in fact, two of our three manufacturing panelists were Smith County folks, we had Megan Pack from Woodgrain and Carolyn Powers from Shoaly. Got a lot of attention, that was in, if you, you maybe saw the Business Journal, the Tri-Cities Business Journal, where we were on the cover. We also offer scholarships to students that are pursuing post-secondary education, and they want to go into a career in manufacturing in southwest Virginia, so we awarded 17 students with scholarships to, that started this school year. Then services where we work directly with manufacturers, those are sort of things we're doing for manufacturers. We have our Manufacturing Legislative Council, where we bring manufacturers together with their legislative representatives to talk about their needs. We also did luncheon learns and trainings on topics that manufacturers have said they want to learn more about, connecting them with resources, folks like Marty Holiday, that are able to offer things like on-the-job training resources and grant funding to do training. We do a lot of work to link manufacturers up with what they need, because a lot of times they say, I know that there's grant money out there, but I don't... they say, "I know that there's grant money out there, but I don't know how to access it." They can call us, and we've been able to save companies thousands of dollars through accessing different grant funding. Career Fair is in our careers page. If you go on our website, swvam.org/mfgcareers, abbreviation Manufacturing Careers, you'll see a listing of all of our members' job openings. And there's individually about 70-plus listings on there that represent hundreds of job openings. And that's just for 30 companies in southwest Virginia. So, we are trying to show people, you know, we hear, especially from the young generation, especially when we go and we interview these students for scholarships, "Well, I know when I graduate, I'm going to have to leave here, because there's nothing here."
I hate that.
Right. Me, too. If you, I don't know if you all had a chance, when Marshall Compressors shut down, we had a massive career fair, and there was a sheet that was printed out, and there were 50 employers there, and there were hundreds and hundreds of job openings looking to be filled. "There's nothing here." Oh, my gosh, that's not true. I just, every time somebody says that, I want to print that list out and give it to them and say, "Wrong, wrong, wrong." A lot of those jobs are going unfilled, because they're looking for more middle skills. They're looking for skilled welders, they're looking for engineers, they're looking for hydraulic techs, they're looking for more specified jobs, and manufacturers really struggle to find those people. I mean, just talking to utility trailers, looking for an environmental health and safety specialist. A lot of those have been on there for a while, because they're looking for those sort of more middle skills, not really necessarily bachelor's degree, but more than high school. So, we're trying to carry on that message, and we're also working to support manufacturing through getting the word out. We've put that out on social media, and it gets lots and lots of shares. We provide different networking opportunities for our manufacturers, because we hear them say that that's incredibly vital, like you've heard the story about adding $5 million to their business through networking. One of the things that we do, on top of the other things I've told you about, is our peer groups. So, we have a continuous improvement peer group that meets where those professionals get together. We have an environmental health and safety peer group where those professionals get together, and then we have a Women in Manufacturing Professional Group, all of which have been a great way for them to network and share challenges and strengthen their business. So, as far as things we have going on this fiscal year, we've already done some tours for some teachers, taken them into manufacturing companies and helping them see what happens here. I think I told you this last year, but one thing that always amazes me, bless you, is one of the teachers, when we fill out, we ask them to fill out an evaluation form, and one of the teachers said, "Well, you know, I didn't even know we had manufacturing in southwest Virginia." Saying to me, "Well, we've gone to another teacher." And we said, "We'd like to offer scholarship," or, "School." And we said, "We'd like to offer scholarships to your students, but we never get applications from your county." She said, "Well, none of my students go into careers in manufacturing." Phew, so we need to educate these teachers and guidance counselors, and so we're working...
Preaching your choir, right?
We're working to do that, yes, Mr. Blaiver. We already had our Manufacturers Expo for this year. We have offered opportunities in manufacturing presentations already across the region. And then we've been involved in careers expos, where I told you we just did Smith County, West Pulaski County coming up next week, and then we have United Way of Southwest Virginia's Careers Expo for Youth. As far as upcoming things for this fiscal year, like I said, October 3rd, Smith County Board Supervisors has a table for eight that is completely free of charge. Eight people fill that up. Y'all come and join us, learn about the different awesome things that manufacturers are doing across the region and in your county. And we have been doing, each year, Manufacturing Month is in October, Manufacturing Day is October 4th, every first Friday of October. And so we try to schedule several manufacturing tours across the region to celebrate that month. We have...
Who attends those, those Manufacturing Month tours? Is that where you take, what groups do you take to those? Is it the students, or is it, I don't know, I guess I'm asking?
We specifically focus in on the Career and Tech Schools and getting their welding and machining students into different facility tours. So, we reach out, Ms. Wyatt, she's one of the most passionate ladies I've ever met. Like, she will fight for her students like nobody I've ever met.
She was recognized with, she's our job coordinator, graduate specialist, and last night at school board meeting, received her 505th award, where we met or exceeded the five national objectives, the percentages that are set. Doesn't that surprise you?
She's incredibly passionate. So, we take her students in, we reach out to her and say, "What classes would you like to send on manufacturing tours, and what facilities would you like to see?" So, based on that, we arrange those tours.
Thanks.
Manufacturer Career we have coming up in October. I talked to you about what that was, it's happening at EVAY, Southwest Community College and Virginia Highlands Community College. And then we have our opportunity, more opportunities manufacturing presentations that happen at each of the Career and Tech Centers across the region. We'll be offering scholarships again this year. If you have any connection to graduating high school seniors, please encourage them to fill out a scholarship application. We unfortunately have not gotten a lot of scholarship applications from Smith County. We work every year really hard to get into the schools, talk to the teachers, talk to the guidance counselors, and we still struggle. So, if you have any connection, please encourage students to apply for the scholarship funds. So, either get $500 or $1,000, and all they have to do is be going into a career related to manufacturing, so that can be welding or machining, that could be business administration or engineering. We're very open-minded as to what that looks like, but they need to show a passion for manufacturing, specifically in southwest Virginia. And then we do have our Women in Manufacturing Symposium coming up in March. So, briefly, those are the things. Of course, we have a lot of other things going on, but those are the things that maybe stand out the most. Any questions? We do, of course, very much appreciate your continued support throughout the years. We would not be able to do what we do and make the impact on the manufacturing community without your support, so we very much thank you for that. I hope to see many of your smiling faces at our awards banquet, October 3rd. Food is always very, very good. I promise you, it's always very good, and it's always a good time, so I hope you all will be able to join us. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Does anybody have any questions? I appreciate your presentation. I know it's, everybody loves to see that. I do like to see that gap being closed, you know, and I know y'all, you have to really work to make that close. And I know I've had that discussion with Mr. Blaiver before, too, of the stigma of people thinking, "Oh, it's manufacturing, it's dark and dirty." And I've been blessed to go on some of these tours of these facilities, and I'm just taken back and thinking, "Wow." It's normal. So, I like that, closing that bridge, because the opportunities are available. I like that. Thank you very much.
Y'all have a good evening.
I better get going, I feel a little another break. We did. Committee recommendations, Budget Committee. I think I'll see what we did in Budget Committee that I was at. Gabe Johnson, granted administrator for Smith County Sheriff's Department, presented two grants, awards from the Department of Motor Vehicles and Highway Safety. One grant has been awarded in the amount of $4640 for speed enforcement, and the second has been awarded in the amount of $13,100 for selective enforcement alcohol. Both grants require 50% local match, which will be met in kind, with in-kind services such as fuel and maintenance on vehicles. It's a committee recommendation to proceed with those grants, accepting the grants for Is there any more questions, or that is a committee recommendation?
And the Sheriff's Department is meeting, is that what you say?
Yes.
Okay.
Any more discussion?
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Just one thing, MRI, they do have an in-kind, but it's like fuel and stuff that's already budgeted, so it's not like it's an expense above and beyond.
Right.
That they're already allocated.
They're allowing you to utilize existing line of funding.
Right. Thank you.
All those in favor? Mr. Carter presented bids received for a 2020 or newer tandem axle roll-off truck to be utilized by the Solid Waste Department. Four bids were received. There on the following page, the bids were... After reviewing the bids, Good Pasture Motor Company had the lowest bid for a 2020 tandem axle roll-off truck in the amount of $144,500. And that was a committee recommendation. Is there any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to point out, there are five bids listed, one of the bids did not mean manufacturing.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Then we reviewed, received for the purchase of containers needed for the Solid Waste Department. Two bids were received, Barker's Waste Equipment being the lowest bid at $4,690 each, or for each 40-yard container. And there was a motion made to award the bid to Barker's Waste for the purchase of three 40-yard containers at a total cost of $14,700.
Mr. Chairman, if you would please... What did I say, Barker? Baker? Just so the board knows, then, two bids, one was for Midstate Equipment, the amount was $6,625 a piece, and then Baker's Waste Equipment at $46,900. So, a pretty significant difference.
Well, am I not correct in saying that, we were looking at two, but then it came in for the amount for three? Is that correct? And then we were able to get the three for the price of what we thought we were going to get two for?
And this is who we've been getting it off of in the past, too, isn't it?
We've been, absolutely. For at least the last decade, Baker's Waste Equipment has been being taken manufacturing.
So, it'd be completely compatible with what we got now.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
That is a committee recommendation. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor? thank you. Ordinance Committee, Ms. Wyatt?
Mr. Chairman, the Ordinance Committee man, on August 28, Mr. Tom Burkett-Treasure was in attendance at the meeting to address questions that have been presented by the board members during the public hearing for the proposed ordinance that would allow 20% fee to be added to an individual's delinquent personal property bill to allow for offsetting the costs that are associated with the administrative collection agency and attorney fees that are accumulated due to trying to collect the delinquent bill. Mr. Burkett explained for such fees to be applied in the collection process, an ordinance identifying the ability to collect such fees initially has to the local governing board. Board members were concerned with the timeframe in which the fees were being applied to delinquent bills. Mr. Burkett explained the fees would likely be added to delinquent bills older than four years, and the treasurer's office will be as uniform as possible when adding the fees to tax bills. Mr. Burkett would not have further explained he would prefer the board supervisors allow for his office to use discretion when charging the fee due to certain circumstances that may not fall within the specific timeframe being set forth. There was a lot of discussion about this. In fact, we even had to go back and look at the previous board meeting to see what the comments and concerns were presented at that time. Finally, Mr. Burkett stated he would like to withdraw the request, or his name, for the ordinance, to add the fee to the delinquent personal property tax bill. And he did submit a letter. I think, Mr. Curry, you have a copy? I received a copy.
We all do.
Yes.
Better be.
So, that, we can't believe that's, with that proposal. And then also, during that meeting, there was some discussion about further investigating the code sections and the authority that was given to the treasurer, too, how much autonomy they have, how much power he has, and how much the board has.
Good question. I'm curious, I mean, why did he withdraw? Is your question, any idea?
Charlie, in Glasgow, I just felt like he, as it was discussed, he decided to just...
See, he's doing it, see, if I may, he's doing it right now, except he can't pass the cost on to the, whoever he's collecting tax dollars off of. He just, the county picks up that cost, and he was just trying to do it a way to save the county some money, and he just felt like it wasn't worth the aggravation to try to pursue it.
Not worth the aggravation and saving the county some money? So, a couple of things stand out, and they, you know, the words, he explained the fees would likely be added to delinquent bills older than four years. I think all the board was asking, or something to be uniform, to make sure everybody got treated the same. I don't think there's too much to ask. And I'm not fussing at the Ordinance Committee, I'm just making a comment.
Of course.
Because I want to, I want to find out why you want 20% added, and then all of a sudden, when you get a few guidelines to go by, you don't want to do any more. You know, to me, that throws up a red flag, and, you know, when I was further explaining prefer the board supervisors allow his office to use discretion, well, you know, guidelines and rules are made so discretion don't get handled the wrong way. So, I want to express, I didn't know exactly what I'm, in the committee, I understand it was lengthy for this, and I'm not against him collecting money back, Charlie, if you say he's already getting or saving the county, but I am against people not following guidelines and rules. I think that's kind of what's led to the, to a little bit of tonight's discussion about this, was there were some motions made in committee, from what I understood. Well, Ms. Wyatt, you continue, because if you come to one, then we'll, yeah, because there's some committee recommendations.
Well, actually, and Mr. Stevens, you know, in response to his concerns, there were several concerns initially about the wording.
Yeah.
You know, that maybe it may be vague, maybe it needs to be more concrete. And so that was a lot of the content for the second meeting, to do those revisions and look at it.
Okay.
So, as far as Mr. Burkett's decision to withdraw it, I really cannot speak to that. Can you, Charlie?
Not directly, no. I just thought it got aggravated.
Yeah. And that would be something that he would need to go into detail.
No, I mean, I'm just curious. It doesn't matter.
Sure. I mean, I wish we had more, you know, more answers to that. But one other part of it that we kept coming back to was what authority was vested in which office? And that probably is still something that might need to be looked at with that desire, if that would take the approval of the board. Because we weren't quite sure how much autonomy Mr. Burkett had, and how much the board can force. Is that right, Charlie?
Yes.
Chairman, may I?
Yes, you sure.
In addition to that, and this was, this was a lengthy discussion, and I think, I think it was summed up correctly. I think there was probably just rethinking of an order request. But in dealing with this, one of the motions was to allow the county attorney to draft up some of the language that would go into an actual ordinance. And I'll pass these down. These were actually brought by the office today. I don't know how or if it impacts any of those. It may be an opportunity to look at those and maybe once again, ask for some different clarification, but...
Who did this, Mike?
The chairman's office prepared this, now. And I know the chairman was left, and we had a fine, failed filing done here on the end, but I will not put it on the spot as I normally do. But the second portion of what the committee had asked was exactly as Ms. Wyatt had identified, to look into what code sections apply with the authority of a treasurer, to see what allowance is there on in that capacity. But after having the attorney draft up those proposed amendments, I think because some of the questions at the last meeting was, we were basically going off of an advertisement, and there was communication about actually putting it in the court. I didn't want to share this with you, as we did receive this today.
Could this be... Could this be, could this be, so, so this is... That was the questions that were asked, and these were the attorney to look into, and these are his findings, correct?
Yeah, what, what actually happened is, is we wanted to ensure that we tried to include all of the questions that came from the board themselves.
Uh huh.
So, we actually encouraged the committee to come in, and we replayed that whole section of video so we could accurately understand exactly what was being asked. And as a, as a result of that, um, as the communication continued, I think, I think there was a reluctance to continue to push that forward, but the questions still remain. So, this is, these are points, as I have looked at, as to what would be included in an actual ordinance for consideration. You have a request from the treasurer to simply withdraw it, but you also have some additional language and literature that, depending on how the board wants to pursue, moving forward.
Should, should these findings be sent back to the ordinance again, and then come with a final recommendation, or is that... I, I mean, I know any recommendation from a committee has to be voted on by the board to pass, I get that, but, um, if, if there's more digestion to do, isn't that kind of what we do in committees, I guess?
I'll say this to be quiet, but I think this is a better identification of some of the language that would actually go into an ordinance.
Right.
And I don't know how much of that has been used, advertised, advised, et cetera.
Right.
So, I'll link that up to the committee, but I think it's a good point to start with.
And this is the first time a committee's seen this.
That's what we've got this afternoon.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion and let this go back with it, with what the attorney's had now, and give it back to the committee and let them study it, come back and see what they want. I'm not against penalizing people or making people pay, but I think it needs to be uniform. I don't think anybody has the right to say, well, I'm going to choose who, who does and who don't based on what I think because I am treasurer. I, I, there's got to be some language somewhere or another. I think this is a good start. So, I make a motion and send it back to the ordinance committee to review what our attorney's done, and then come back with some kind of suggestion on which way to go. Got a motion, got a motion in a second on the floor.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
The, the one dilemma that we kept hitting against a brick wall was, how far does our, our arm reach as far as authority? And Mr. Campbell said, well, that would take the whole board to ask him to investigate that, right?
Correct.
And, and that seemed to be a little bit of a, a brick wall that we hit, of how much authority do we have? So, I don't know how the other two members feel, but that was the dilemma that I was feeling, is, you know, how much can we exact in that?
Yes, I think we need to have that question answered before we consider the, the first question here, you know, how much can we direct?
I think we just float around in a circle again, wasn't it?
So, then we, we need to, as a full board, if that's a consensus of the full board and a motion and majority, to have him pursue that as well?
If that's something you want to do. He did mention, you know, that that could be costly, if it involves hours, so that's a decision the whole board would need to look at and determine if they want to do that.
Has it given us something here that we can't use? Have you seen this?
I've seen it just, this afternoon, Mr. Borwitt.
So, in your opinion, do we have the power to invoke these, or are we just giving something out of the clear blue sky and says, here is an idea, but you may or may not have the power to invoke them? I mean, that's what attorney ought to be able to tell us without costing us a arm and a leg, so...
Matt, Matt, Mr. Arnold, again.
Yeah.
Seems like I always put you on the spot when you and I are, I'll admit, but I understand this to be, uh, points to, of consideration to consider putting into the ordinance, et cetera. I, I do not understand this to be a ruling or an opinion from an attorney's office identifying that the board has this to do, or the treasurer has this to do.
I would say that's an accurate description of what's been presented.
I get that. I get, I, I get that. But on the other hand, you have an attorney saying you might want to enact this in your ordinance. Why would he hand this to us if it's going to cause us trouble down the road? I mean, that's...
And I don't have the right response, but if you want to get to that right response, it may require a consideration by the board to direct the county attorney to review those authoritative privileges that follow in those respective bodies.
What I would like to have, and this is not directed at you, but more at our attorneys, is a piece of paper telling me, if you give me something, can I do this? Not a piece of paper saying, it's going to cost you a lot of money to find out if you can do this. Don't give me this if I can't do it. And I'm not directing it at you, I'm directing it over here, so...
Then I would suggest you begin to ask it, but the full board wants that consideration, and there needs to be a direction given to the attorney to do that. That's my suggestion.
Maybe we ought to wait, Mr. Chairman, to, you can't answer those questions.
I, I would feel it would not be wise for me, sitting here as recent as I've adopted this seat, to opine on such a question that delves into the contention between the power of a treasurer as a constitutional officer and this board as a body politic. I think that's a very specific question, and any answer I give would be, off the cuff, Mr. uh, Mr. Stevenson, and I would deserve the right to take time to examine the issue in depth to give you an accurate answer.
I get that, and I'm not looking to see who has the power either the treasurer or the board of supervisors, I'm looking to find an answer if we can put these in ordinance legally, is my question. So, do you have that answer?
Again, I think that poses, I don't know exactly where this process is. I think for, you know, the board, any board, has to follow certain procedures before it acts in ordinances, um, such as having a public hearing and having a vote on it. I don't know if that's been done or not.
There's, there's no, there's no... There hasn't been a public hearing.
On, on this specific document?
On the advertisement. That's what prompted, there was questions from the board about, hey, this is an advertisement, this isn't an actual ordinance, and we need to put it into an actual ordinance format. That's part of what got it back to the ordinance committee, and wants to take that, that few paragraph advertisement, transition that into an actual ordinance. Here we are.
And, Mr. Chairman, if, if I were, I'm looking at this a little bit different, watch yours. I'm looking at this as, what, this is what he's saying that our ordinance would look like on the books if we adopt it, rather than just being points that we might want to consider. Because it says recommended changes indicated in, in strike through the chapter 23, article three, section 23 through 43 of Smith County, Virginia two, of ordinances. So, I'm thinking this is what he suggested we might want to adopt, and which is what we would advertise.
That's what I'm thinking. I mean, why would you hand us a piece of paper like this if you, if you can't do it?
But it doesn't answer the question for the second part.
Yeah.
Of the minutes. It doesn't answer the authority question, and I think that's what it goes back to.
And that's, that's something that, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, but also, Mr. Stevenson, that's what I was surprised by, is that it would cost us extra money to get that opinion. And that's where the whole board would need the right decision.
And I guess if you're going to change an ordinance, you want it to be right, so you want, I mean, if it costs you money to do the legalities on it, you would make sure that it's that way before you put it into an ordinance, so...
So, as a committee member, that's kind of my, my report.
Well, I'd hate to, raise a, raise a penalty, 20%, cost us several hundred thousand dollars at the other end to find out whether we can do it or not. I mean, that don't make good sense to me, so, I don't know. I, I'm thinking, I don't know, I don't know, if you just want to go back to the ordinance committee, then, I don't know, or maybe we need our attorney to find out where we stand on this.
Well, if it goes back to ordinance committee, you can get the same thing again unless we get our second question answered.
Well, that's what I'm saying, maybe we ought to get into, hear from that, right?
Didn't we have two recommendations coming out of ordinance committee? Weren't those the recommendations?
Yes.
The last two paragraphs?
So, we will vote on the, on one, well, right now, we've got a motion on the table to send it back to ordinance committee. But I'll withdraw my motion.
Would it, would it be permitted if I was to turn down, if I was to have a, a, a more detailed conversation with our attorney about the thoughts and opinions on whether or not, and not, not as a committal of dive deep and swim hard, but just an understanding of what we're looking at? I, I, I don't disagree, I don't vote, and I don't disagree, but I do think you need to get the board, board saw, if you're going to.
Did somebody want to consider making the motion to table this until those answers, questions are answered, or... I'm glad we make a motion to table it, our attorney tells us whether we even need to send this back to the, uh, ordinance committee for y'all to consider, and whether we can do it, where we at? I mean, to me, it's cloudy.
I second that.
Wouldn't it, I'd go back to call for the changes that's been made in it? It's a, it's a no-brainer, it has to go back to be reviewed, but that other question has to be answered first.
And I don't want to add another murky layer, but, Mr. Arnold, if, if this is different than the advertisement that was placed in the paper at the time of the public hearing, would there not be a read advertisement, let the public hearing go along with it?
That would be my understanding.
So, has it been an advertisement? I mean...
It's only been one, but it was not of this caliber.
In the last month, since I've been gone?
It was over that time.
We had the, the, the language in it was very vague, and I think most people on the board felt like if it was going to be an ordinance, it needed to have some specifics in it.
Well, I agree, they are uniform.
Right, so it can be applied consistently throughout the county.
I think, Mr. Chairman, some of the language in Canada was nay, and they wanted to replace the shell, some different places, is that correct?
Well, all right, I'm, I've, I've got a, I had a motion on table, and then he, he withdrew it, Mr. Stevenson did, then he made a motion to table it, and Ms. Wyatt seconded the motion. So, we need to follow those, and then we need to address these two committee recommendations that are before the board now. So, if we table it, do we table it before we get to these two committee recommendations?
You have a withdrawal of a motion.
Uh huh.
You're not allowed that motion a second.
It didn't have a second yet. Then we had a motion to table it, and we had a second. But we also have two, which, if we table it, does it just table the entire thing? If it does, then we have two committee recommendations that need to be addressed that are, came from committee, unless the table motion tables those as well.
Mr. Arnold, you are the attorney, Clay Martin, because if you table, if you, if there's a record, if there's a motion to table, a motion to hand till the next regular adjourned meeting, and that tables those two motions, still leaves them by, but it, it tables those motions to your next meeting, and then you act upon them accordingly.
That's, that's correct.
I have a motion and a second on the floor to table this. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Okay, it's tabled. Okay. Well, that, that, okay. So, that took care of ordinance. Thank you, Judy. Appointment committee recommendations, Mr. Blevins?
Mr. Chairman, we have an appointment committee meeting.
On the additional agenda.
On the additional agenda, on the back page of your additional agenda. Uh, Mr. Carter, County Administrator, have this information concerning the Complete Count Committee, which is the CCC Committee for the 2020 census. The committee will consist of members of the community. We've added one here tonight at the meeting to assist in educating the public concerning the importance of census. Several people have already committed to being on the committee, including departments of services, town managers, and the library. Lisa Richardson, Assistant County Administrator, will be contacting others to request involvement. Uh, Joe Howey, District Supervisor, Chris Ray, made a motion point, we needed a board representative, Ms. Judy Wyatt, to be on the CCC or the Complete Count Committee as the board supervisor represented, and that was a unanimous recommendation. Just overall on that, of course, we had our presentation tonight, I sent to a presentation today of another organization. This is an extremely important number, and all, I mean, tons of financing and formulas will be based on these numbers, so it's extremely important that we get everyone counted in for as many as we can find, because it will have a direct impact on the viability of the county and every department that they, that we support. And that was a committee recommendation.
Committee recommendation, is there any more discussion? All those in favor? opposed?
Basically, topic that was discussed, Mr. Carter presented some information concerning the broadband policy team, which is what we had discussed in some previous meetings, which will oversee a review of local policies to ensure the locality is an internet-friendly destination for broadband. I'm sorry, I just have a, a brain shutdown there for a minute. Uh, the committee will consist of, of those involved in the county development, again, a lot of people involved. Basically, there was a motion made to appoint the Rivali Supervisor, which is me, to sit on that committee, and then with the discussion that as long as this committee is, is continuing that in January, that my replacement would then fill my, my spot for this broadband policy team, among the considerations, the rivalry is locally underserved and, and in other areas in the county, but obviously, this is something that's important to the economic development of Smith County. So, there was that recommendation, and it was unanimous, and I'm not going to abstain from voting because I think it's important for my district, so, that was a committee recommendation.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Very good.
And that was the appointment.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I had one, I, I finally got my commitment on, I had mentioned, I know I mentioned it maybe appointment, and I think I mentioned it in our last board meeting, my SWIF at-large appointment has had a change in her, um, just her, her, she was, she had a change in her, in her dynamics to where she can't make that obligation anymore, um, and so I'd been seeking, she had asked to resign, and I'd been seeking a replacement, and I finally got commitment before we came here today, uh, from a, from a citizen, for an at-large appointment to SWIF, uh, Mr. Bradley Powers, um, has accepted. I'd asked him if he would be okay with the nomination, and he, he said he would be glad to, um, so I'd like to make that nomination to the SWIF of Board of Bradley Powers.
Is, is that a district-specific, or is it like...
It is not, it's just a county at-large, see...
Can you give us some background on him?
He's very active in the community, runs his own business, um, those graphics and marketing, uh, out of a, definitely a new business, his business is, they're on Lee Highway in Atkins. I, I think, just being a small business owner and being involved at the level that he is, you know, I asked several different people, and I had several declines, so, I was...
I think he'd be a good appointment. He's been here and talked to the board a couple times, uh, he can speak, he acts like he's a level-minded, I think he's a good appointment.
Is there a motion on the table?
It is second.
Uh huh.
You got it.
Motion and a second, any more discussion? All those in favor? I thought, two for... Okay. On page 13, I was invited by the mayor to come and make a, for the proclamation of Constitutional Week of 2019, and, uh, I'd like to read that if I could for the record, that was, uh, myself as a board, as a board chairman, the mayor of the town of Joe Howey, the mayor of Solville, the mayor of the town of Marion, and the court for the court, uh, were present to, to sign this declaration. It says, whereas... It says, "Whereas, on September 17, 1787, following weeks of vigorous debate and compromise, 39 delegates from 12 states, including James Madison, George Washington, and John Blair from Virginia, signed the United States Constitution, which ratified the form and function of the nation's system of government. And whereas the Constitution was written to uphold individual liberty and justice for all citizens of the United States, and these principles are reinforced in its first ten amendments, known as the Bill of Rights. And whereas the 231st anniversary of this historic event allows us to reflect upon our rights and responsibilities as Americans, to celebrate the foresight demonstrated by the framers of the Constitution. Now therefore, we officials of Smith County, Virginia, on this day of September the 9th, 2019, do hereby recognize this week of September the 17th through the 23rd of 2019 as Constitution Week, and call this observant to the attention of our citizens." I guess I'm just sharing that, I didn't ask for board... I guess that's just what you do as a chairman of the board, is for those kinds of things. So I guess that's just for informational purposes.
I support your confirmation.
Okay, okay. Oh, let's see, where are we now? Baco Homestead Conference, page 26 and 30 through 34 in the booklet. Baco Conference is coming up. That's just the information that's in. I think Ms. Woods has been in contact with members about that, and I don't know exactly where that stands. I know that there were some conversations about who goes, who doesn't go, whatever, whatever, and this is just for the information that Homestead, what the conference is. It gives you the agendas. I know I have, I've been on this board 16 years, and I've attended this for three years, and I would like to continue, I would like to go again. I came, I've come back every year, and either brought everybody a cap from RFC and gave an update on what went on. So I know last year in particular that we just had had the Space Out announcements, and we kind of felt like rock stars there. The governor mentioned this in the opening comments of the Baco Conference, labeled Smith County specifically, and we went to an agriculture committee, environmental agriculture committee, and topic of conversation again. So that was really cool to see. But I don't know who all has signed up. I know what we have historically done in the past is just been kind of on a seniority basis. Some years, I guess, nobody's went. I've heard about it for years and never did go. And I don't know of any of the other chairman that went. I don't think Wade ever went when he was chairman, and that was for, that was for eight years. I don't know that Charlie ever went, and it's his term of him being chairman for, that was probably eight years. Anyway, there is availability for everyone to go, if everyone wants to go. As of now, there's three reservations at the conference center itself, but every board member can go. They just have to stay at a bed and breakfast or a hotel that's not onsite. So that's just out there, so if anybody wants to participate, participate, and I don't want to say it's on a first-come, first-served, and I guess, just to keep it fair, that's about the only way I would know how to handle that, is just do it on a seniority basis. So if there's availability and you want to go, sign up, and if there's a room at the conference center, that's great, and if you want to go, we can get you a room somewhere else as well, so...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I know most people probably aren't considering it. I would encourage everyone to...
Phenomenal conference.
The conference is very good. There's like 93 counties, about every, I want to say every county in the Commonwealth, Senate representation. The programs that they give, the financial programs that give, I mean, I've been in the past, and I've attended, you know, several, several very beneficial broadband, et cetera. There was EMT issues, financial issues. They have great presentations on the inner workings of boards and how, you know, what our responsibilities and roles are, and stability that sometimes is lacking, social media, just all those kinds of things. It is an extremely beneficial conference, and you will learn a lot. So I would strongly encourage you to consider it.
So you got your supervisor training certificates?
I did complete the Baco supervisor training several years ago, and I want to say about five, five classes. There's actually a session on that. You have classes, it's through the Virginia Tech and through, I can't remember the other organization, but it runs through Virginia Tech. It's five classes, it talks about what your roles are, what your responsibilities are. You know, it talks about, you know, how to set policies, how to make good policies, things to look at. Like I said, they give great information, and I think is very beneficial. I mean, I work for the school system. We do professional development every year. You know, they're the same group that puts out when you're elected, the new supervisor training, so that when people come on, you learn what it is that you're supposed to do. And everybody runs for a board supervisor because they have an agenda. A lot of times, those agendas don't really match the role of a board supervisor's member. So I mean, I just think it's extremely beneficial. I don't know how anyone can argue that being better educated in the job that we volunteer to run for and do is ever a bad thing.
Thank you. District specific, is there any more questions on that? Does anybody have anything? District-specific appointments, Atkins District, EDA, Mr. Atkins?
I'm still working on getting that one. He's indicated last time he didn't want to do it anymore, but I've not found him a replacement, so I've got to talk him into it.
Okay.
We're working on that before I leave.
For Park District, I have an appointment for the DSS board of Susan Snead. She is on the board currently, and would like to continue, and I think she's found out she's the only one that refuses her pay to be on that board, so she's very involved, and I'd like to make that appointment as well.
Same.
Is there any more discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Ms. Woods, have I got it all? Supervisor comment time, Mr. Call.
Everybody be safe going home, and remember work tomorrow.
There is a ceremony going to be held downtown tomorrow over that, if anybody's interested in coming. Mr. Ray?
Everybody have a safe trip home.
Mr. Ray. Mr. Atkins?
Tomorrow at 3:00 PM, the Tourism is having a unveiling of the Love Virginia sign down at the center in Chilhawley, so everyone's invited at 3 o'clock tomorrow afternoon.
Mr. Stevens?
I'm ready.
Mr. Blevins?
Just also, a reminder, we are down one member on the, this time, for the library board. We have had a few meetings, given, and talked to those people, and then they end up declining for various reasons. Keep that in mind if you have anyone who is interested, and send that to you and myself and Mr. Carter, so that you can pick that up at your next scheduled appointment.
I'll tell you, Mr. Blevins, I've made some contacts even today. I don't mean to take away from his comment time, but I do know that we were down to a five-member board, and it was to consider seven again, and there's, I think, Mr. Stevenson and myself don't have representation in our two areas, and I'm actually working on that hot and heavy to try to find, to find the right person for that board. I've made connections today, actually, I just, so I'm actively seeking that, and then I don't know if that's something that we need to take up as a full board, whether we go back to seven members instead of just the five, or if it's a consensus at the board we do that. I know the terms have to be staggered, so we, that may have to go through appointment committee of how to stagger those kinds of, stagger those.
And just keep working, I mean, what I would suggest is keep working on some nominations, and if we can find people who are interested, and it's getting more and more difficult to find people who are willing to volunteer. There's a lot of rewards to it, but there's also that negative, you know, where...
It's taken a lot of heat.
Oh, yeah. But like I said, if you can find someone who is obviously likes the library, and wants this mechanical copper library to continue to succeed, just send the names to the, either I'm the chairman of the appointment committee, or Mr. Carter, or the scheduled meeting, we'll get it going.
Thank you. Ms. White?
Well, I would just like to say, I thought it was a very good meeting. I really enjoyed the presentations and the various groups and the services that they're offering. I think it's really beneficial to the members of our community and our leadership, to be able to work together to improve the job skills that provide, to get in full reach and to upgrade their, their own lives through these programs. I'm very excited for that.
I don't have anything. I appreciate everybody's attendance. There is a very strong possibility that I won't be at next month's meeting. You just some good fortune my way, but there is a possibility I won't be. I don't know that for 100%, but I feel pretty sure, so... Mr. Blevins, if you have to take the reins for that.
You're on happy killing.
Yes, sir.
Just one final note, we were talking about Baco earlier. I think you had something in your information packet, but just as a reminder, Smith County is a member of Region 12 in Baco, and there is a Region 12 that actually merged with Region 13, who is the western end of Virginia. A meeting is this Thursday at Washington County's Board of Supervisors Room. It's beginning at 2:00. It's about a two-hour meeting, but it is an opportunity to interact with your fellow Baco members from your other localities. They have some programs, and I think it kind of relates back to something else, and we got, we got some tourism components that are going to be brought out at that meeting as well, so if anyone's available Thursday, 2:00, Washington County Government Center.
This Thursday?
This Thursday, September 12, 12:00.
That's all I have. I'd like to say, oh, Bud, I'm glad you made it back. Missed you. Glad you had a safe, safe journey. I agree with Ms. White, we had, we had some good presentations tonight, they gave, there's a lot of stuff happening in the county that are for the betterment of our county and the citizens in our county, and I think that there's programs out there that sometimes people just don't know about, and I don't know how they don't know about it. When the young lady from SPAM says, she hears that people, "I got to move away from here to get a job." And I said, "I hate that." She said, "Me too, because I do. I hate for that to be told." I know the manufacturing around here is, there's some fantastic jobs. I think Space Out is overwhelmed with the responses they're getting. They're having to call people off, they're like, "We can't take any more applications, we've gotten so many." So I do know that Sholey IPN and Smith Machine and Welding, I mean, these guys are wide open. They're, they're ready, they're looking, and I share everything that I've come across through the county line or through Facebook. I do a little Facebooking, and when it comes across from, from any of those companies that they're looking, man, I hit and share, 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 because I want word to get out, because they are there in their good paying positions, and the training is out here. The training is available for everybody in our community to do. All these organizations are saying that every time they come up, "We'll train you, train you, train you." All right. We do not have a second meeting this month.
Wood Green, Wood...
Wood Green, yeah, I see banners hanging up, flying in the air, so, all right, thanks everybody. Man, glad you could make it. Skippy Better?